Okay, we'll call to order the January 11, 2021 council meeting. And the first item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes for the December 14, 2020 regular meeting. If you've got time to review those.
Approve the minutes.
Have a motion to approve.
Second.
Second, any discussion? All in favor, right?
Ah.
Pose, like that? Good, yeah, let's go into the old business, first thing to get this out of the way, in your packet, you had an artist rendering of the area around Cedar Street for the surface water runoff mitigation plan. The idea there is that we would put that in the paper so folks can see what it's going to look like. To get the idea that there would be a walking trail around it, there'd be some strategic planting of trees, some shrubbery, and we're talking to a lady who does butterfly gardens, perhaps to put a good butterfly garden there. And we want to dress it up so it looks nice and it's something that everybody be proud of and bring a great amenity to their part of the community. And this will be an item we'll get all our data together on so we can get this into the budget for this year and then start to work on it after July 1. So we're trying to get all this stuff moving forward. Any, anything on the artist rendering?
Is this where the dog park's going?
No, this is where the waste surface water runoff plan is going.
I'm just giving.
I'll tell you where you put the dog park. I'll tell you today where you can put the dog park. On the old, on the old baseball field in Old Park. They're not gonna use that thing for anything else. Not going to, that's what we think about that.
They're not using that baseball field?
Eh, no.
They did it.
They have been.
I didn't mean anything.
They have been used. They used it several times last.
I think we need to consider the COVID factor. Cause maybe why it hadn't moved.
I'll call you, brother.
They used it several times last year, Mr. Mayor.
Why not? How does, how does he turn it around?
Nah.
The rendering of the pond, those images, those look good, I like the path around it and looks good to me.
Yeah, it'll give an amenity that can be used, has some utilization. We put a bench or two around it so people can see it. But I think once it's dressed up, we can get a butterfly garden there or some other strategic plantings to give nature some call, that'd be a good thing too. So we'll get that put together, but we'll talk about that project in the next two, three months. So we can get all that put together for the budget.
It'll be something nice for the, those on Cedar Street to have something pretty to look at outside their door. I was a little nervous.
I do too, I think we'll be doing.
And a walking trail there will be also coming in handy.
Yeah, I only hope that, that somebody can get the idea that that's one of those jumps for bikes riding out. Those, you want to come out?
Probably build a pump track in the middle of that, that wouldn't hurt that rainwater much.
It's not, it's the mud you're gonna be throwing around.
You'd have to pave it so it wouldn't wash away.
Yeah. Okay, the second item on that is in our own business is the confirmation of Calver City's participation in the Ruled Water Finance Agency. This is a recommendation from Roger. He recommended this about three months ago and there's the benefits for that. John, you want to address that?
They, Greg had gone into looking into, you're talking about the.
You're talking about the rural water finance.
Yes, rural water, that's you.
Yeah, I sent you guys an email during the month telling you which other entities were involved as, as participants in that agreement. Nita, Nita was the only one that responded, she said it looked good to her. So if you guys are okay, just confirm. You sort of, sort of confirmed it at the last meeting, but I would like for you, now that you've seen the list of folks and we're at this point, just, if you'll give me the confirmation to move forward, we will.
Trust you, Greg.
Ooh, that's not a good idea.
Okay, anybody have any? And then do a motion for Greg to move forward on the confirmation. Have a motion. Jeremy, you want to say it?
Second.
Second, any more discussion?
That, that included authorizing the mayor to sign the agreement, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, then all in favor, right?
Ah.
I.
Pose, like, sign?
I would say yes.
Alright.
Okay, good deal. Under new business. The consideration of a proposal by Marshall County Habitat Humanity to deed property to the city of Calver City. This is for a development and for infrastructure development particularly. John, are you going to address that and Ralph is Ralph along?
We're not, we're not ready to make that presentation and in looking at it, we want to, we want to make sure that we've got all of our, we've got one other thing that I think we want to tie up before we want to make that presentation.
Okay, you are reneging on your promise.
I thought that had been removed.
I got you. I won't pick that up, I'm. Uh.
Skylar might be getting bored.
You are?
Skylar might be getting bored with us.
They're riding.
Alright, you guys keep going.
You're a good guy.
Okay, the consideration of adopting a resolution 2021-01 awarding a non.
Exclusive.
Exclusive, yeah, my phone is not that big. Exclusive franchise to Comcast. Of the South. Are you, are you a resident of that group?
Yeah, they're just, there's two resolutions in there for Comcast and, and Paducah Power. They, they bid on the, their franchises, it's that, it's what we did, did last month. It was, it's a franchise to allow them to run lines in our right of way. Their lines are already, already in the right of way, but it's constitutionally required that they have a franchise. And they have paid their $5,000 franchise fee and made their, made their bid and all we, all you guys need to do is approve that resolution, those two resolutions. And, and the mayor will then sign those franchise agreements.
This is what we talked about last month, right?
Right.
Okay, okay, that's what I thought. I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve, you have a second. Okay, I want you to approve in a second, any more discussion?
These are all straightforward, right Greg? I mean, there's nothing here. I mean, we, we, we used to have a more complicated franchise setup than this and we got rid of it all. And this, and this is just basically like you said, that they can use the right of way.
Right, this is not cable TV franchise agreements with fees and all that stuff, it's a whole, whole different ballgame. This is simply the franchise that's required of all utilities that want to run wires in city right of way, on city right of way.
And you want to do both, both resolutions raised at the same time?
Sure.
Okay, just do both of 21-01 and 21-02. That's to Comcast and to the Paducah Power system. With the motion, okay, you okay in your motion of that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Any more discussion? All in favor, right?
Ah.
Pose, like, sign?
Ah. He's quick.
Smaller, a smaller number loses. Okay, the first reading on ordinance amending section 50.01 of the Calver City Code of Ordinances related to temporary filings of offices and general manager and superintendent of the water and sewer department in the event of a vacancy. Greg, you want to address this?
Sure, this is a tail covering measure for me. We're in a, we're in a state of flux with Roger gone and with Silas doing the job of now supervising operator, or I forgot exactly what your title is, Silas. What, supervisor, what is your title, Silas?
Operation Supervisor.
There you go. Well, the language in our ordinance specifically references general manager and superintendent. And some of the, some of the things that need to be done in water and sewer as far as regulating PO2Ws and so forth are specifically assigned to general managers and superintendents. And so this, this ordinance is designed to give the mayor the authority to allocate those duties to other employees during periods of vacancies in the general manager and the superintendent positions. Because right now we don't have one. And so if certain things came up, if certain issues came up, we don't have anybody authorized by ordinance to take those actions. So that's what this ordinance is about. And it says, whereas the mayor has recognized a deficiency in chapter 50 of the Calver City Code of Ordinances relating to the application of the chapter during times of vacancies in the offices of general manager and superintendent. And whereas the mayor has requested an amendment of section 50.01 so as to allow the mayor to assign the duties of general manager and or superintendent to other, to another employee of the city during times of vacancy in one or both of these positions. And whereas the city council has determined that the request of the mayor for an amendment of section 50.01 of the code of ordinance promotes the best interest of the city and the efficient operation of the city's water and sewer department, now therefore being ordained by the city of Calvert City, Calver North of Kentucky, that section 50.01 of the Calver City Code of Ordinances hereby is amended as follows. It's section 50.01 definitions. The definition of general manager is changed to say refers to the general manager of the, of the Calver City Water and Sewer Department or in the event of a vacancy in this position, the city employee designated by the mayor to perform the duties of the general manager delineated by this ordinance and otherwise. Superintendent is defined as, excuse me, refers to the superintendent of the Calver City Water and Sewer Department or in the event of a vacancy in this position, the city employee designated by the mayor to perform the duties of the superintendent delineated by this ordinance and otherwise. No other portions of section 50.01 are affected or intended by this amendment. That's it. Having questions?
Okay, so with the introduction of the ordinance.
Right.
Do you have, do you have most candidates?
Make a motion, when this order is presented.
Okay. A second, okay, any discussion? Ms. Glenda Coro.
Sorry, Councilman, Councilman Babcock.
Yes.
Councilman Coburn. Did you answer?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, Councilman Hale.
Yes.
Councilman Rao.
Yes.
Councilman Harrington is absent. Uh, Councilman Stokes.
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, Glenda, if, if we have a special call meeting sometime in January or anytime before the next meeting, be sure and put that second reading on, we need to get this thing enacted as quick as we can.
Okay, I will do that.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a new riding contest winner. Blair, I'm gonna give that to you to give an update on that and introduce the new winner and then go right into that with your report.
Thank you.
You did, Blair.
Yeah.
Blair, you're still here?
Yeah, I'm here, I'm here.
I thought the pork chop were calling me, I haven't been.
I'll, I'll be going off screen when that, when that gets ready. I'd like to proudly announce the winner for January's riding contest. Um, you know, as all of y'all know, we have a monthly riding contest. Uh, it's called the Youth Voice and this year's, uh, this month's winner in January was Skylar Ford. He is here today and Skylar, can you just tell us a little bit about yourself? How old you are, tell us about your article. Tell me, tell, tell us a little bit about yourself.
All right, well, um, I'm Skylar Ford. I'm an eighth grader at Redland Middle School, I'm 13 years old. Um, I played the guitar, piano and the ukulele. Yeah, um, when I wrote this article, I was just thinking about, I've been into politics a lot recently and I just saw in history like Nazi Germany, the Soviet Union, just countries like that where the people basically had no freedom and just the horrible conditions they lived under. And I just want to make sure that my future generations don't have to live through that, so. Yeah.
How did you find out about the contest?
Uh, my mom, uh, eighth grader riding teacher showed us about it, so, yeah.
And she's also your favorite teacher, right?
She definitely is.
Alright, well, thank you, Skylar.
Almost all your articles, Skylar, and I was really, really impressed and I'm gonna finish it as soon as the meeting's over. You did a great job.
Thank you.
A lot of thought put into it.
Thank you so much.
Are you gonna put it to music?
Sorry?
Are you gonna put it to music?
You want me to play you some music?
No, 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 or you can put your, your writing to music. Well, I'm thinking about Merle Haggard, who had, who wrote the Oogie from a Stogie, which is a political statement based on the sixties and Vietnam War. So yeah, write you a song to this too.
Yeah, that's, that's a great idea. I'll think about that.
Well, you did a great job and I appreciate you doing it. Thank you for participating.
Absolutely.
Anybody have any questions for him?
Good job.
Thank you.
Okay, Blair, you want to give us ready your report?
I'm sorry?
I was talking to Blair.
Thanks for coming, Skylar.
No problem, anytime.
You did a great job, thanks buddy.
Thank you, thank you.
Alright, um, oops. Uh, so for me, um, where do I start? Obviously, it's 2021, so we are in the year of the sesquicentennial. Um, we have several great events planned, which I know we've talked about in the past. One thing I do want to show you that is not live yet, it's still kind of a working concept. But I wanted to show you, I have been working on creating a website for the sesquicentennial. This is something that we can, let me pull it up here. That we can use to promote all of the events that are happening. And we have, as of today, we have a hundred, it's the, the theme, I guess, is 150. But we have 150, or we're celebrating 150 years with 150 events. With help from the library and obviously KEDA, uh, the, the middle school, or I'm sorry, the middle school, the elementary school. All of our events combined, uh, it comes to 150. So all year we're celebrating and this is the website that you can go to. I said, it's, it's not live or anything, so I set it up to where we could have all of our events set up. And we had one location for them to go to. And then, I'm just gonna scroll through, but here are a couple of the events. So we've got the beard contest, the old fashioned fiddle contest, basketball tournament, live music and entertainment, arts and crafts, obviously food, can't go, go without food. Cornhole tournament, the sesquicentennial ball, golf scramble, and then a celebration of 150 years with the, the museum that we're planning on doing setting up at Civic Center. This website, I'm hoping will launch tomorrow, maybe tomorrow, I was hoping today, but I, I couldn't get it all finished today, so. But we'll run through that. It has sponsorship opportunities, volunteer, please sign up as a volunteer. Just go ahead and mark July 1st through the 4th off your schedule. You can't go anywhere, you have no vacations, everybody has to help on that day. We're definitely going to need it. But anyway, that, that, it's, it's a great place. Rhonda Vincent's manager was in contact with me last week and she said that, or he said that he has been getting phone calls pretty much just on a regular basis asking about the Calvert City show. So that is, is exciting and look forward to having her on that, the 3rd, July 3rd. Um, let's see, we developed a, a leadership team for the Tennessee Riverline. That leadership team will work on special events and also be advocates for Calvert City when it comes to dealing with Kentucky Lake and the river and the Tennessee Riverline program. We're going to start trail tracking this month, I'm hoping, if not, it'll be February. Basically what that is, is we look at who's using our trails, when, when they're using our trails and how they're using our trails so that we can kind of get a base of how many people are using them. And then once we start doing heavy advertisement and then also we finish that trail connection, we can start and continue to do it every year and, and get those statistics where we can see that, you know, hopefully that they're improving. More people are on them and using them and I definitely know just from, you know, working in Calvert the last three years, I've seen more people on the trails this year than ever, than I have ever, so I think that's great. Um, I, I can't really go into detail, but we have, I have two meetings this week. One for a possible restaurant going into Smokey's. Fingers crossed, hopefully that will come through and, and, and go well. I know Smokey's, you know, has been baked it for a while, so. The other one is a company that we have a meeting with on Wednesday and they do long-term and short-term storage for rail cars. Fingers crossed on that one on Wednesday. Hopefully it goes well and we can get them in here in Calvert if, if, if the, if we feel like it fits. Let me go off of this. And then I had a meeting with Russell Clark, who is the National Park Service, and I think I've talked to you about this before, but the application deadline for that is moving closer. It's on, it's March 1st. So on Tuesday of next week, I have a meeting with Livingston, the Livingston Judge Executive, Katie's Judge Executive, Land Between the Lakes and Grand Rivers. And we're all gonna meet and go over this application process. So that we, when we submit this application, it's an application that includes all of us. Russell seems to think that it gives us a better opportunity to receive federal funding. And I'm super excited about that, but that'll be on Tuesday of next week and hopefully that will go well. We'll get the application turned in before the March deadline and yeah. I think that's all I got. Back to you, Mayor.
Okay.
I've got a question, where was that Calvert Theater?
It was on Main Street. Oh, go ahead.
Yeah, it was on Main Street, Greg, it was down, uh, Costum Drafters Department Store. Ed, Ed Rendeman had his jewelry store right beside it for a long time, Old City Hall was down there beside of it.
Oh, it's down, it's over, over on Second, on, uh.
Main Street.
95.
On 95?
Yeah, Main Street.
It's sidewalk out, and the sidewalk out in front of it had some footsteps, I remember, were peculiar. Next day, you remember Campson's Electric that sold appliances and stuff down there?
Yeah. Was it down there between Herb's Barber Shop and Campson's?
Well, that wasn't the only thing there, but yeah, it was between those two.
Okay, okay.
There's a lot more there.
Sorry, I missed that. Made me want to go, okay.
We all missed it too.
No, we didn't all, because I got to see Hansel and Gretel in 3D there.
Really?
I'm happy for you. Having 3D glasses and all, it was wonderful.
Things like, I've seen a movie there, I've seen a movie there that like was a special thing for a group. It went, I mean, it never attended a movie there.
You and I, Gene, had our movies at the Civic Center on Saturdays, on Saturday mornings, they showed movies at the Civic Center. Okay, sorry. Just kind of got, he does about Lumen Adenner.
Okay, John, can you give us an update on projects?
Well, of course, we have the, uh, the Civic Center completed, uh, we're working on City Hall. Uh, right now, I think we're in hold waiting for some materials to come in to finish the cap around the top of the City Hall. But the, uh, the sides are pretty well done, um, with the exception, well, basically the cap is all we like on the building. That and the ladder in the back. We are considering and looking at, and actually we're looking at doing a monument style sign in front of City Hall as opposed to actually drilling into or putting holes in our new siding. So we're looking at that as an option instead of putting the City Hall back on the wall. We are winterizing the fountain now and removing all the Christmas decorations. Uh, we're also in the process of having all of our, we're getting most of our employees trained on aviation fuel and fuel handling, so. We're not too far from putting in the, putting in the test fuel for the pumps, uh, but we're waiting for, Mr. Haskell will probably address that in his portion. And then we're actually taking care of some other maintenance issues, um, just scattered throughout, so. Mr. Coburn probably speak to it, we've got a, we're very close to, I think, to taking receipt of our new fire truck. Gene, you want to address that right quick?
It's, it's done, we, we've been through a virtual acceptance of it, instead of going to South Dakota. We, uh, we spent two and some odd hours on, on the video conference and moved the, moved the iPad around and looked at everything, so it is as represented. Originally, they slacked two days of acceptance for that, so you lay hands on it, drive it, pull the valves, close the valves, open the valves, uh, so we can't do that in, in that way, but uh, the next step is for them to drive it to Cincinnati to the dealership location. So I think our plans currently are to go there and give it a good thorough, uh, hands-on going over. If there's an issue discovered, it's better to do it from the dealership than it would be after we'd received it. So it's a little, I'm still a little ambiguous when we actually sign for it, but it's a good-looking truck. I think everybody's gonna be very proud of it. And, uh, they are the, you know, within COVID and in South Dakota, they're running a manufacturing location where they have multiple people working in pods. And I think, what did we decide, John? It was three months late, is that right? Something like that?
Something like that.
So they, you know, they've had their work cut out for them too, and I see Chief Davis isn't on here today. We have, we have something neat we want to show you, but I want him to show it to you. So we, we have some good, good video representation of the truck. We'll let Tim take us through that. Is that what you're talking about, John?
Yes, sir, I appreciate it, yeah. I didn't want to take thunder away from the firefighters on that one, because that was a, a nice looking vehicle and put together very well and thought out very well too. And I believe that's all I've got, Mayor, unless they've got something else or questions.
Okay, any more questions for John?
Question for John. Sorry, I have a question for John.
Sorry, I have a question for John. The Parks Board, in the last Parks Board meeting, you all were talking about a volleyball court in Old Park. I was wondering if you all were considering making that removable? Since it is only, you all were discussing maybe just the grass area, not actually sand. So I wondered if, you know, making it removable might be an option.
Well, the, the unit that we have is one that needs to be set in concrete, and what it gives, this one is actually where you can actually adjust the height depending on the type of usage. It can be used for both men's volleyball, women's volleyball, batmitten, so it can be even tennis. You could actually, if you wanted to do that, but the whole thing in a nutshell is, is we were gonna put it over there where the parking lot is now, but because of the new pavilion, we never did get a chance to put it in because the new parking area took up the place where that was gonna go. That being said, the existing playground structure does not, does not couldn't pass muster on a safety inspection because of the materials it's made of nowadays. And so the whole-
Which one is that? Which, which one are you talking about?
The wooden one, the wooden play structure. That's the old one that was down there, the plastic and wooden play structure, or metal and wooden play structure. It won't pass muster as far as safety goes. So we were-
Horse and carriage?
Say again.
Is that what you're talking about, the horse and carriage?
No, ma'am.
The horse and carriage?
Playground, well, it's got the slide, and we've, we've actually shut down part of it, but that's the oldest. No, it's not the oldest. I guess the oldest would be the stagecoach, but the stagecoach, believe it or not, is, is, we could do a couple of things to bring it into safety standards, but the other one we cannot because of the materials. That's got wooden posts. So that's the purpose, and so we're gonna remove that one and put it in there, so that it's close to the pavilion or that little, that older pavilion and the playground area, so families will still be in the same area instead of being separated.
Okay, I, that makes me happy. I was a little nervous about, I was thinking you all were going to remove the horse and carriage, and that's, that's a huge hit, even it was whenever I was a kid, and it is for my kids, so.
Well, the horses and carriage, the swing set, and the pyramid will remain. It's the other unit that will not.
Okay.
Okay, any more questions for John? Mr., Mr. Tim, are you on?
I am.
We're, we're waiting on good news.
Well, I think I have good news, and I say I think because it hasn't actually happened yet. But the state inspector is scheduled to be on site for the fuel system for the final inspection this week. As soon as that inspection is complete, you will be asked to fill your, fill both of your tanks half-full. And there'll be a seven to ten day test period. It's called the soak test, looking for leaks and looking for, making sure the system is working properly. The requirement will be to re, to circulate the fuel within the system for thirty minutes each one of the test days. As soon as that's finished, which presumably will be before the end of this month, you will be able to dispense that fuel and sell it. The other projects going on at the airport are, the Tea Hanger project, forms are being done. The electrical inspector has approved the relocation of the electrical service. We're expecting to pour the concrete for both of the, both of the buildings within the next couple of weeks. The runway project is complete, but we will not sign off on it and release the contractor until after early spring, when there is evidence that the, that the grass and other erosion control has taken effect, and then we will close out that grant. That's all I have.
May I interject one thing on the hangar, sir?
Pardon?
Can I interject one, one thing on the hangars? Just to let you all know, we have probably twenty of the twenty-one hangars spoken for.
Wonderful.
So we, I expect before we complete this project, that all the hangars will be spoken for. I've got, I wanna say fourteen planes now that are actually not selected by someone else, just us alone. Four planes that are held by us at another airport, and two that are waiting to come in when they purchase them, and one, one open hangar. So that's where we stand on that.
That's really good news. That's just wonderful.
And that's all I have.
Okay, Tim, anything else?
I have one other small item. It's just to, to update you. When Congress passed the stimulus, the most recent stimulus package, there was a set aside for general aviation airports of forty-five million dollars. That is essentially a stimulus for, so that GA airports can pay their bills while traffic is down. That despite the fact that many general aviation airports are seeing more activity since COVID started, but that's a, that's, we won't argue with Congress about that. Right now, the state, we're monitoring the state of Kentucky's intention on how to handle their portion of that forty-five million dollars for GA airports. And we'll be, we'll be monitoring that and keeping communication open with you so that you know what is available. In addition, that stimulus package also set aside aviation money for capital projects. And we are lobbying for, on your behalf, for a fencing project.
Yeah, good.
That's all I have.
Feel about the fencing project?
Pardon?
Do we have a chance? Is it viable?
It is. We have a forty-five, sixty-five chance.
Big numbers.
Would it, would it happen for a Democrat or Republican?
At this point, I'm not sure.
I'm, I'm still a Democrat. We'll, we'll go after you. We'll call McCollum's Republican and cross the line here, too many of them. Good deal. That's a million dollar project.
Yeah, that's, that's the next critical project.
What, what is the cost estimate on that?
Eight hundred thousand.
Okay, Tim, thanks, very good. Let's see. Kevin, you still with us? I can't, he's gone. He has to leave for something. Nada?
Yes.
Did you have anything?
No, I don't. I just appreciate everything everybody's doing to keep us running.
Tana?
Course I do.
Your time's up, your time's up there, I'm sorry.
First, I have a question for Ms. Glenda. Ms. Glenda, can you tell me if that two dollar and fifty charge, two dollar and fifty cents charge for the water bill, when they pay automatically, is that going to be each month, or was that a one-time charge?
No.
Let me, let me address that, Glenda.
You go ahead, go right ahead.
Yeah, we're, we're gonna, we're gonna address this in a letter to the consumers, so they understand that if you pay your water bill by credit card, there is a charge of such queue, not by the city of Calvert, but by the credit card company you're doing business with. And we have no control over that money. That's their money. They do that with every merchant they do business with. And so we're gonna have to have the consumer to understand, it's like you go buy clothes at Penny's, or you buy cash at the service station, there's enough charge, you might not always see it because you don't always know what it is, but that charge goes to the, to the cardholder, goes to the card company, not to the city. We have no control of it. So it happened every time they make a payment by their credit card, credit card company's gonna charge them for handling their money for you. And so, yes, that's what's gonna happen, but we're going to do that in a letter to all of our customers, so they better understand what they can do to alleviate that, and the best thing to do is to have automated drafts of your checking account. Tell us to take it out of your checking account. We'll be charged there, and there'll be other ways that we, maybe we can help them, but that's the big deal is there.
Okay, wonderful, thank you. I also wanted to bring Jeremy Rose. He, I've shared a post about his son on Facebook, because they are at our batting cage all the time, the Rose family. And their son Talon's baseball team is going to be going to Chicago and Arizona to play. They're really good. And I'm telling you, if they're all dedicated as much as Talon is, then they have a very strong team, and so I'm not surprised of how far they're going, but he made a Facebook post, or he commented on my Facebook post of his post that I had shared, and he said, "Thank you to all the Calvert, the fine folks of Calvert City and City Council for the wonderful facilities that we make use of for our family. We truly enjoy our time there in the ballpark and the trails. It's top-notch." So if you all ever see a family down there, they got two boys, and they are there religiously, say hi. That's Jeremy Rose and his family. They're super sweet, and I'm very proud of how far his son Talon's ball team's going. Now, that is all I have to say.
Okay. You sure?
I think so. I'll, I'll call you later, I'm sure.
Okay, Gene.
I don't have anything past what we've talked about. Just appreciate everybody staying safe during COVID. Hopefully, we, you know, see a glimmer of hope coming out the side of this thing. Be nice to be in the same room with everybody, and for the most part, I'm getting good reports on city employees of how they're able to stay distant, and I hope they keep up the good work. So it's still gonna be a slog. It's gonna be a while.
Yeah, it's gonna be a while, you're right.
It's all I got. The more, one more comment. The more Uncle Andy says you can't do back in the summer, the more traffic we had on our trails. I was trying to distance from everybody, and people just kept showing up in our community. So it goes to Blair's comments about the traffic this summer. Can you believe everybody, anybody ever wondered why we put sidewalks in on Fifth Avenue? Can you imagine that? There was opposition to that. That's crazy. It's all I got.
Jerry.
Good.
Then do we have anything else? Anybody ever hear anything to talk about?
I'm gonna go straight to bed.
Man, I am gonna say kudos to you for your vision, because if you didn't have, if you had not had that vision, we wouldn't have those sidewalks along Fifth Avenue and a lot of other things, and, and you deserve a lot of credit for that, seriously.
There are other people, I'll tell you the guy who has the credit, who initially started that project, was Ken. Ken started the project just before he got defeated, and when he got defeated, he just let it go, but that's where it started. I told him to do it at times, but if you just stay with it, you get, you got that done. The timing is a lot of it. The state was ready to do it, and so we have a lot of things going on. I, I appreciate all y'all, y'all, your support is so much, and the city has benefited so much from y'all's dedication to it. Let's just keep it up, and amidst the COVID, we're just, we're gonna go on forward, we're gonna be careful what we do, but then we'll be making some, some adjustments. We are going to, and I'll tell you this, we're in the process now, after looking at COVID for a year, and looking at how we operate and the things that are happening in our social structure and in our economic culture, looking at our city divisions and our, and our departments, look at our employees, and look at, at how we do certain things, and we're going to be making some adjustments to that. And we're gonna be doing some things that we think they will, they will, for the long term, stabilize the employment for employees, make their job much better, and give the city a much more effective work crew in the long term, who have so many talents that are in, within our city to utilize that we sometimes, and the, the only way we did things, are missing out on that. The Civic Center is an excellent example of the talents you have in the workforce in our city that ten years ago, we would never have known, because we had a contractor come in and do all that work. But we got some guys who can do a lot of great things, and we're gonna look at being able to share those employees from department to department, to talk to department leaders, crossing over to do different things based on their talents and on their skills. So we're gonna be talking about this in the next few months, we'll be bringing some ideas and start getting your feedback on how we make this happen, and I can have it more effectively. Just hang in there, we're gonna make it happen. Okay, with no other, there's no other business before the city to have a motion.
Motion.
I make them up.
And I have five seconds. So just, just choose who you want. Okay, y'all be careful, be careful.